All right, thank you.
Thanks Pastor.
Let us pray. Good and gracious God, we give you thanks for this day and we rejoice with the East Metro Stars for these young hockey players and we congratulate them on their championship, Lord, and we give you thanks for youth sports, especially youth hockey, for the skills they learn, for their leadership and their teamwork. May you bless their careers through the whole of their lives and help hockey to be a source of joy for them for years to come. We offer our prayers, Lord, for our public servants who have been entrusted to govern the city of North St. Paul. As they conduct the people's business, may they do so with wisdom and insights, may they deliberate with kindness and charity towards one another, may they be good stewards of our resources, and may they strive to improve the lives and livelihood of all residents and business owners in North St. Paul. Let the work they do on our behalf be a reflection of your love for those whom you have made. We pray also, Lord, for our first responders, for our police and fire departments, and for all our public workers. May you watch over them each day and keep them in your grace. Grant this prayer according to your goodwill, and may you bless us and keep us. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. Okay, um, pledge of allegiance, can I have Crystal Peterson come up and lead us in the pledge? That's fine, right there is good, okay?
I do allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm making an adjustment on the agenda. This is a very special night for me and our community, your parents, and your players. I would like to have Eric Peterson come up, Coach Peterson, and talk about what this is all about.
Tell us a good story about him first.
Eric Peterson, 2618 Belmont Lane East, North St. Paul, lifelong resident, forty-two years, going on forty-three years. Guy with a really high water bill in January and December, and probably some complaints to city staff about what goes on in the backyard on Friday and Saturday nights, but other than that, good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, city staff, and residents of North St. Paul. Thank you for your time tonight. In a minute or two, I'm going to introduce to you two East Metro youth hockey teams that were top seeded in their league play this season and won their respective District Two championships. A brief history of who we are and how we became the East Metro Stars. The East Metro Stars is our youth, is our local youth hockey association. The East Metro Stars is a merger between Johnson-Como North St. Paul, JCNSP, and now in a two-year co-op with Tartan Youth Hockey Association. Our home arenas are Polar, Tartan, and Fala Arenas. All these communities have had long, deep, rich history of youth hockey that goes back generations, but as these communities have aged and demographics has changed, this is what it's taken to keep youth hockey running in our community. Not always an easiest, not always an easy task when your closest rival city is now your teammate, rival coaches, rival board members working together, parents and fans coming together to cheer the, cheer on the same team, the kids. No matter what the age or background, I told our parents back in October that we would become one big happy family, no matter what side of Century or Highway 120 you lived on. I believe we've done that. District Two hockey consists of all our neighboring youth hockey associations, which include Monomidi, White Bear Lakes, Stillwater, St. Mary's Point, Forest Lake, City of Lakes, Minneapolis, St. Paul Capitals, Roseville, Moundsview, Shisago Lakes, Hudson, Wisconsin, Somerset, New Richmond, Baldwin, and River Falls. I'm sure I missed one. Several of these associations with hundreds of kids and multiple teams at each level. Being a top seeded team in this district and winning the district playoffs was no easy feat, and it didn't happen because of luck, a bad call from a ref or a good call from a ref. This was hard work, determination, and never get up attitude by a bunch of nine and ten year old athletes, the kids, which in the world we lived in today, this is a very welcoming outcome and much needed. Back in October, no one knew who we were. Today, today, all the communities listed above in the youth sports community know who the East Metro Stars are. The city of North St. Paul has always supported youth hockey, whether it's North St. Paul Hockey, JCNSP, and now the East Metro Stars. On your website, in your fall roundup parade, and other city events, I ask you all today for your continued support as we end our first year and enter our second year as East Metro Stars. We need all the support and kids that we can generate to sustain a youth hockey association in our area. Let's face it, youth trumps, youth sports trump screen time and video games any day of the week, and it creates future community members and leaders. These kids, our program, have a very bright future ahead. Now, the important part, the kids. These kids and their families are a big part of our community. They live here, they work here, they go to school at District 622 and other local schools, play multiple other sports here, go to church here, shop here, live their daily lives here. Several of these families are North St. Paul families. As parents, grandparents, siblings, aunts, uncles, fans, and coaches, we are very proud of these kids, and we hope that you are too. That's all I got. I don't know if you guys want to comment at all, but I'd like to introduce these teams at some point. With that, Madam Mayor, Council Staff, North St. Paul residents, I am, we are very proud to introduce the 2022 East Metro Stars B and C Squirt District Two Champions. And we'd like to get all the kids up here. I don't know if you guys want to come up here and tell us your name and what city you're from and what team you're on. You're more than welcome to do that, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, that's fine, we've got time.
We got time. And if you don't want to do that, you can walk right by me and go right to the front here. But let's start with you Frankie. Come here. Eric Peterson, City of North St. Paul, C Squirt Assistant Coach.
My name is Frankie, that's all my.
Oh, Frankie, go right up here, go right up here. One at a time, let's go, let's go, let's go. Don't be shy. Don't be shy, way to go Chase.
I'm Chase.
Over there, over there. Oh, right here Chase.
Yeah, yeah, you certainly did.
You guys are coming up as I call your name.
I give all these guys mic time, and this is what we get.
Wyatt Yang. Nico George. Oliver Kirkoff. Ryan Lothian. Grayson Canoke. Mason Williams. Cole Kraus. Nico Lars Larson. Xander McNally. Alex. Casanova. Danny. Sid. Wyatt. Brock. Thomas. Coach Ross. And I'm Drew Peterson.
That's the B Squirt team right there, guys. Where are we starting, all the way up there? Might as well get the guy with the trophy here first. Marcel Zampera, City of Maplewood. Cole Tor. City of Oakdale. Liam Lang, City Woodbury. Hank Given. City of Oakdale. South Maplewood maybe, South Maplewood. Do I know you? Colton Betts, City of Maplewood. Ben Dawes, City of Oakdale. Maplewood. Joe Sebeck, City of North St. Paul. Casey Peterson, City of North St. Paul. Riley Schnitz, City of Oakdale. Mario Navarro, Mario Navarro, City of Woodbury. Dick Wazinski. City of Woodbury. Mava Godnik, City of Maplewood. North St. Paul, City of North St. Paul. Oh, I don't even know this last name. Junior Soto Lora. Edwin Schmidt, City of North St. Paul. Carter Larson, City of Oakdale. Chase Hedrick. City of Oakdale. Ryan Aragoni, Mike Lang, and Tony Hendrick. C Squirt District Two champs, both these teams, congratulations. Let's get all the coaches in here. I don't need, I don't have to stand in the front, I know I'm short, but.
He's a comedian too. I don't need to be in there. Well, thank you all for coming. Make sure the boys and the girls get a cupcake. And it was a pleasure having you here and continued success. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, you bet. Thanks Eric.
We appreciate it. I thought you, Scott, I thought you called it.
Yep, thanks Eric, see ya. You livened it up. Well, I don't know how we're going to top that, but we've got an agenda to get through. To adopt the agenda, I understand there's been a change. I would like to have City Manager.
Yep, let me back up and we'll do roll call.
Oh, yes. Sorry. Jenny, will you do the roll call?
Councilmember Thorson.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Acting Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Mayor Furlong is absent.
So, City Manager Stark, can you explain the agenda?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. With regards to the agenda, item 9A on the agenda is the awarding of contracts for several street and utility improvement projects. There will be additional street and utility projects that you'll be considering in the future, and after further discussion with Finance Director Winnick, with our public finance consultants at Baker and Tilly, and City Engineer Morgan Dolly, we decided that we would recommend that you defer this item to a later meeting in order to take a more holistic look at all of the projects under consideration and the funding available. What we didn't want to have happen is for you to approve something tonight, and you know, let's say in a month or two months, we came back with another road project and said, you know, this, this came in a little over budget, and now we don't have enough money to do that, and for you to say, well, wait a minute, we wouldn't have approved that thing back on March 1st if we'd have known that, that there were some, you know, budgetary constraints. So, we're recommending that item, as I said, item 9A just be deferred until a later meeting.
Okay, thank you. We'll do presentations. Yeah, consent agenda, would you like to?
Yep, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for people watching at home, a reminder that the consent agenda contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. Once the consent agenda has been approved, all of the individual items and their recommended actions would also be approved and no further action is necessary. Any City Council member is welcome to ask for an item to be removed from the consent agenda for a further discussion. Tonight, we have eight items on the consent agenda. Item A, the February 15th, 2022 regular meeting minutes. Item B, general claims of $1,061,746.13. Item C, HRA claims in the amount of $3,983.55. Item D, a resolution appointing John Stark as the responsible authority for the Data Practices Act. Item E, resolution approving authorized signatories for the city of North St. Paul. Item F, purchase of two new lawnmowers by Public Works, which I would note was approved in the budget already in December. Item G, donation from Target to the North St. Paul Police Department. And item H, a Ramsey County library and North St. Paul use of fiber optic capacity agreement. And that concludes the consent agenda for tonight.
Thank you, is there anybody that wants to remove one?
Well, I think.
Councilmember Thorson.
I think we accidentally skipped over just adopting the agenda, so I'll make a motion that we adopt the agenda with that change of pulling item, item 9A and deferring that. Yep. Second. Aye. And then I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Aye.
Yes, meeting open to the public, John Schmal.
Mayor Council, John Schmal, 2750 Chisholm Avenue. This is the time of the year that your first bill comes out for your electric, from the electric usage for the month of January, so you get to see what the increase in the rate is. And this is something that's bugged me every year that this has happened, and that is is that there is a rate that's been approved, and the first month that it starts out, there is an adjustment for power. And you would think that you'd be able to get it down to an at's eyelash as to what it was going to be in whatever process the city goes through to set these rates. God only knows, because it doesn't follow the rules of the PUC, the Public Utilities Commission, because it doesn't have to. Therefore, when we get an approval of the new rates, it's a agenda item that says, we're now going to approve the new utility rates for the year of whatever. And the next thing is, is there a motion? Is there a second? And then there is a vote, and this year, strange enough, it went down aye, 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 nay, nay, which is quite different from previous years. But to make a comparison, the XL Energy is subject to the PUC, and they're now in a process that's going to take about a year to get approval of a rate increase. And that rate increase will take in comments, or the procedures will take in comments from the public, from God knows where, this, these people will be saying, I think I need to have some input into the increase in rates. But that does not happen in North St. Paul, or any of the cities that are public utilities as North St. Paul has. So, in the, the first rate this year was just two and a half percent increase. Wonderful. The only problem is with the power adjustment, it was an 11.7% increase. So, you had to do some figuring to see just exactly what happened. Last year, we didn't have an increase, but with the power adjustments for the bill in October, it was a 30% increase. You had to pay 30% more than you did from what it said as the, the rate. So, I, I just wanted, I wish that the Mayor Furlong was here, because if, do you like owning a liquor store as he did, putting prices on the items on the shelf? And then, let's say it was a bottle of Shivas, I used to drink Shivas, not anymore, but say it was $20, goes to the checkout, and it's $23. Well, it says $20 over there. Well, I gotta pay for the lights and the heat and all that stuff, so that's a power adjustment to the price that you're paying for this article in a retail store. It just, I, I just don't understand why you can't hit the number as to what it's going to cost on the first month. And then if the power costs go up, they go up, and you, you note that. I happen to have property in Wisconsin, they actually had a power adjustment in their bill, but they overshot the power adjustment, and so they gave me money back on the bill. A very different way of looking at things. So, at, at this particular point in time too, it makes me a little bit unhappy about the utility, because if I hadn't have, didn't have XL for gas, I wouldn't have gotten the wonderful deal for replacing my furnace from XL under their HomeSmart. This utility has no programs like that, like XL has. Also, XL has these programs where you can make donations to the utility in order to help those less advantaged to pay their bills. So, there's just, you know, many things that me personally wished that our electric utility did, other than increase our bills by a power adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Do we have anybody on the, carry anybody on the line? Okay. We have no public hearings tonight. City Business Action Items, City Manager.
We only had the one item tonight that was removed from the agenda.
Okay, okay. Uh, let's have our Fire Chief, Jason Mallenger, up here. Good evening, Chief.
Hi, Madam Mayor and Council, thanks for having me, City Manager. So, just put together some information and numbers for all of you to see and just kind of get an idea of what's going on in the Fire Department, what it looked like in 2021, and if you'd like, I could briefly review, starting with the incident response. And as you can see, year ending 2021, we had 1,566 total calls for service, so a 6% increase from the previous year of 2020. And for 2021, 1,256 of them were EMS, and 310 of them are what we call station all calls, where the entire department is toned out. Those notable station all call incidents fall below with 56 fire incidents, 27 of those being structure fires, dumpster fires, and cooking fires, vehicle fires, grass fires. The other category, obviously alarm sounding, no fire, is, is a high number of 55, and 40 vehicle accidents dispatched and canceled and routed, that's a specific item under the station all call. And the medical assists, we had 30 of those, and those are specific for types of calls where just the first responders and medics are not enough hands on scene, so an example would be like a cardiac arrest, or something in the line of a severe overdose case where there is respiratory failure. 19 carbon monoxide incidents, 10 smoke or odor removals, unauthorized burnings, nine gas leaks, assist the PD, those could fall in line with responding to the high school for incidents involved up there, or anything where they have an incident and they need the, the Fire Department to assist them with. Six power line downs, and that could be in any area of a home service line to a primary service line. Hazardous materials, three of those. Auto aid and mutual aid, we are set up with auto aid to Maplewood and Oakdale, as well as they are set up to respond to us with auto aid. And last year, we had 35 incidences where we responded to the other departments, and we received incidents back from them where they responded for those fire, for those EMS related. Ending the year of 2021, we had 36 total members, and that includes myself. Four members completed the firefighter one hazmat, EMR, EMT requirements for the year as they were hired. Total, we had six that were hired throughout the year. One of those came with experience, one of those just recently completed the fire one and two in mid-December, and just completed their EMS requirements as well. Retirements through the year was Chris Herden with 31 and a half years, and Scott Weber with 29 and a half years, I'm sorry, 29 years. Our response time, Fire Department average response time for EMS calls excluding vehicle accident with injuries from alarm time to arrival was four minutes, 51 seconds. The average response time for a chief officer to our station all calls, average alarm time to arrival was four minutes and 31 seconds. Our average response time for the first engine company from alarm time to arrival was eight minutes and 52 seconds. I'd also like to, I didn't include this, but I was thinking about this today that I should have, I'll just give you a couple notable items to mention regarding our, our staff that I think is a very good thing. One, we have a very diverse team across a range of many different backgrounds, and currently I have six female firefighters, and that's a very high percentage as it is compared to other surrounding departments, so I'm very proud about that. One of our members is currently deployed in Kuwait, and we're hoping to see him back in the next few months. We have five firefighters that are on, on other part-time paid-on-call departments. We have two firefighters that are full-time firefighters on other departments. We have three members that are paramedics, two serve on an ambulance service, and we also have two EMTs that serve on an ambulance service. also have two EMTs that serve on an ambulance service. And we also have separately additionally, two other EMTs that work full-time or part-time in a hospital or medical field. The box breakdown of time of call and days, as you can see, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. Throughout the, the year, we had 499 calls overnight, Monday through Thursday, 4:30 to 8:00 AM, 482 calls. The weekends, days, Saturday and Sunday, 278 calls from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And the weekends, in the evenings, including Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, 307 calls totaling A big part of what we do throughout the year is, is training, and as you can see, there's over 1,750 hours of training conducted by personnel in 2021. We are part of the JPA and the East Metro Training Facility. We spent, conducted over 20 live burns at that facility. We've contracted fire trainers from Make the Move Training to conduct incident scene size-up, engine company operations, smoothbore nozzle operations, as we switched from fog nozzles to smoothbore nozzles this past year. We conduct our own in-house engineering drills, our driving, pumping, and relay once a month, three hours at a time. We sent members to school bus extrication instructed by Century College. We've attended a three-day critical incident mass management training hosted by Maplewood Public Safety instructed by BOMAC Educational Services. This was done for our chief officers, and this was over three days. Fire ground operation during civil unrest hosted by St. Paul Fire Department. Two vehicle extrication exercises at the East Metro Public Safety Training Facility. We had four firefighters that attended the fire apparatus operator course instructed by Century College, which is a 48-hour class, to become basically engineers of our, of our trucks. In the summer, we conducted two water training exercises with the assistance of Ramsey County Water Patrol, that were four hours each. Three days at the Minnesota State Fire Conference for our chief officers. And one more thing that I forgot to add as well, we conducted, or we sent three lieutenant, three of our lieutenants to officer training, that is a fire officer leadership series. It's preparation, strategy, and tactics, decision-making for the initial company operations, and that was a class of 36 total hours. That's a big part of what we do in, in keeping our staff up to par. Would you like to ask any questions about that, or should I move on to code compliance?
Anybody have any questions? Chief?
Just had one quick question. You see, you have the breakdown of the fire calls. Do you have a similar breakdown for the EMS calls of like the detail, like the most common types of calls?
Unfortunately, our system doesn't break down. When we enter in, in image trend, we run off the program that the state gives us, and there's basically two different options that we have. It's either an EMS medical type call, and then, as noted, when it's a station all call for cardiac arrest, we use a medical assist in that way. So we only have the two that we utilize, and that's partially due because we don't submit a medical report to the state. We're just responding to assist Lakeview EMS, and we're using the system that's given to us. If we were to operate our own ambulance service, there would be a medical field that would break it down even more to make that determination. The only way that we would get that information is going in to our system to look at the summary of what we responded to by what the responders put in there.
And is that, is that what was done back in 2008 when that public safety study was done, when they kind of evaluated those types of calls? Is that there's just a lot of manual labor and trying to?
They would have had to dig that data from, I believe they got that from Ramsey County Dispatch through the study.
In that study, they cited of the medical calls, roughly 8% are what they deemed to be critical, meaning, you know, it was, you know, not breathing, cardiac arrest, something like that. I'm just curious if that trend is, you're seeing that trend in these EMS incidents, or is that what this 30 number is equating to of your overall call volumes?
I wouldn't equate the 30 medical assist calls to the high percentage of, I'm sorry, my silence on my phone. I wouldn't equate the number of 30 medical assists, I believe, at this time, because we have first responders, whether it's one or two, along with our Lakeview medics, that we're able to handle more difficult calls because we have people on scene immediately that are starting interventions. But that information could be received, whether it's from, I would imagine, again, Ramsey County Dispatch, or possibly Lakeview EMS. Any other questions?
When is your, the retirement party, has that been rescheduled, or still?
Yeah, so we, I was able to get it rescheduled, and then when we went to set it back up with the event coordinator, they let us know that they already booked that date. So actually, today, I was confirming with our retirees first again, and we're looking at, it'll be late April if everything goes well at this point. So I hope to, my goal was, is to get all that information out later this week to, to everyone, to let them know when it is.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Code compliance? So 172 total code compliance cases, and many of these can be combined with others, making up one case, if you will, meaning we could have a complaint that comes in with parking, yard maintenance, or trash debris all in one, or it could be separate from, from, as, as you see, complaint. 43 parking on unapproved surfaces, and that, that's just primarily, mostly dealing within the wintertime, just because of no parking on the street, the way our, our town was built and some of the areas where smaller lots, smaller driveways, smaller yards, and larger families with more vehicles right now. 37 yard maintenance items, 34 trash and debris, tall grass and weeds, trees and brush, you can see the list as it goes down. Our, our code compliance officers, at the end of 2020, code compliance officer Ron Kaneley retired and was replaced by Mackenzie Foster in early 2021, and Doug Chesvold retired in 2021, the spring. And later that year, we hired My Lee on as code compliance officers, and those two right now work the code compliance complaints and issues, and look for items as, as needed, and deal with those things moving forward. They also work with the chicken keeping licenses and the bee keeping licenses as well. And the kennel licensing, but now that we have a CSO on there taking that back. We also had the code compliance person completing the hydrant flushing in the spring, and depending on the weather and how things go, roughly five to six weeks to complete, depending on their schedule, of roughly 25 hours a week. The code compliance officers also conduct zoning inspections, which include fence, driveways, both those together, and, and signs. And we completed one home occupation zoning inspection as well. Again, two part-time code compliance firefighter positions, and they both are scheduled 24 hours a week, one Monday through Friday, and the other Wednesday through, I'm sorry, Monday through Wednesday, and the other Wednesday through Friday. Fire inspections are conducted by our full-time fire inspector, Captain Fire Inspector Brent Fixon. This past year, with the help of Open Gov, really streamlined some things for us, and definitely was helpful. We had 97 single-family, 22 duplex, 45 multifamily, that include the fourplexes and the larger buildings with up to 18 units in the, in the building. Conducted 38 fire alarm and sprinkler permits and inspections. Again, majority of those were the M&amp;I townhomes, Gateway Townhomes, Sentinel Building, Quick Trick, Hankview Apartments. Conducted commercial fire and safety inspections as requested by property owners, and five school inspections at the District 622 buildings. We are one of the 17 departments in the state that are, are able to conduct fire inspections at the, at our schools, as we have specific training for that and, and keep up with those requirements as well. Three group home inspections requested by the state. We were hoping to get into some safe haven, conduct inspections and, and programs, but just because of COVID, we stayed away from it. So we're hoping to get back into that, into the future here. So I know I went through this real quick, but.
You know what, this boosting population we're gonna have, you're gonna probably need more staff, you're not gonna be able to do all that.
So I know with, at the request of City Manager John Stark, is to put together a proposal to, to give to him, to bring to you guys to, to look at and talk about. So I am planning on having something for you to look at.
Okay, very good, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a question. I don't know if this pertains to the code compliance or not, but so on the breakdown, it says there's 34 trash debris type calls. Is that specific to an address, or, you know, I guess where I'm going with this is if someone throws a mattress into the ditch, or there's tires left in a public parking lot, and that gets called in, is that code compliance that's dealing with that, or is that Public Works, or how does that, how is that handled?
So typically, if, if, yeah, if anything comes in, most of the time, what we try to do, if, if it's something that we can handle, even if it's on the side of the road with a pickup truck, we'll have the code compliance officers pick it up and, and throw it in there. If there is something that we need help from Public Works, obviously, we'll, we'll ask them. But yes, we do, anytime there is anything related to complaint that came in, or something that they did, it will get, right now, we're using SharePoint for that, and that's another thing we're gonna be working with, Carrie on, and in the future, switching that over to Open Gov as well, to have everything there. But yes.
Okay. And the reason I ask is because when we made the switch from the haulers back in the fall of 2019, we also made a modification to the way a bulk pickup was paid for. And, you know, I've just heard comments in the past by people who are critical of that, saying, well, now we're gonna have a, an increase in just public dumping. And I guess this would be, and obviously, there's instances where maybe people don't call it in.
Yeah.
It's happened, I mean, myself personally, I've picked up trash on the side of the road and not called it in. But knowing that that has happened, but this seems to be, you guys are, you're responding to reports of illegal public dumping, that's what this trash debris category is specifically, or is that a combination of?
It could be a combination of other things. It could be a combination of something in somebody's yard, not just alongside the road.
And then, again, the reason I'm asking, as we approach the end of that contract, and we're gonna need to, you know, either discuss renewing it, or, or putting another request for bid out, if that's something that we can maybe fine tune and get down to see if, if that is in fact true and happening, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you, just from our experience, both ways, it's, it's a tool for code compliance to use with a property owner, if they're looking for a way to get rid of it, is, is just having that option one way or the other. How you deem fit, it's, it needs to be paid for, whether it's how it was previously or how it is now. But it definitely is a tool that, that we use, and it can be helpful, because a lot of times, residents just don't know the best way to get things. They just put things out there and don't realize it's not gonna be picked up because of the type or the size of the volume, so a conversation has to be had with them.
Thanks.
Yes. I was a member long.
Thank you, thank you for sharing all that you all are doing at the department. I have a question in regards to the zoning inspections of signs. Currently, the Planning Commission is visiting the sign ordinance. We recognize that it's a little messy, and I'm just wondering if you have any feedback for me to bring to the Planning Commission in terms of how you approach enforcement?
Well, for us on the zoning inspection for the enforcement of it, really, it's after it has come to you and has been okayed and gone through the process. So really, for them, they're just going out and inspecting and making sure that everything is done the way that it was applied for or written in, in the permit, and just making sure that, that is completed. However, again, a lot of times, we'll have businesses, or it's usually businesses that will end up adding, whether it's some type of, of flags or signs. And again, it's just not exactly knowing what's allowed or isn't allowed. So I don't know if I have anything specific for planning, but other than trying to make it easier for them to see or understand on what they can and can't do as it relates to sign, maybe they just don't realize that they have to apply for a permit because of the size, color, type, and, and all that. And I know we've done a really good job recently of getting information out there to inform people, and that could just be another area, I think.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Madam Mayor, just while I have this opportunity, you know, I wanted to kind of share my reflection. In my short time here, you know, what's jumped out at me with Chief Mallinger is that he, he just has a genuine and an innate desire to be helpful. And, you know, that's, to me, that's one of the definitions of a, of a true public servant, that desire to be helpful, and, you know, he, the, the culture he's creating at the Fire Department reflects that. So like I said, I've been here a very brief time, but I picked up on that pretty quickly.
Yeah, I, I agree. He, he's a super guy, and we're getting more firefighters, or retaining some, and it's all good, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work and your staffs, thanks a lot. Okay. Do you have anything, City Manager?
Yeah, I do have one other thing under City Manager Report.
Yep.
Oh, I can hand these out. This is just a tentative workshop schedule going forward, you know, just to kind of plan ahead for what we're gonna be looking for what we're going to be looking at. This is subject to change, you know, things come up, things change. But it's where we're at now as, as you're, I think you talked about this at your last city council meeting. I was absent. Next Tuesday, there's a special joint city council, E D A and Planning Commission workshop at 5 o'clock. We decided to have this at 5 o'clock to reflect the regular workshop time. And that would be a presentation of development proposals by prospective developers of the Lilly site. I think I misspelled Lilly there, sorry. March 15th, discussion of past and current staffing levels and an identification of future staffing needs. April 5th, a presentation of the park improvement plan from the Parks and Recreation Commission. And then an initial discussion of the range of solutions for the community center building. You know, the community center is going to take, I think, a couple of workshops, two or three to work through. But we want to start at least understanding what, what the range of options are or if there are things you just don't want us to explore. April 19th, we'd like to talk about student-built housing, get an update and talk about some future projects. May 3rd, we don't have a topic yet, possibly a follow-up for the community center discussion. And then May 17th, we'd like to talk about the Highway 36 and Highway 120 intersection, get an update. We'd like to have folks from Mindot and WSB here, perhaps others as well. So I put that out to you. If you have other thoughts, email them to me. We're going to keep a, a running list of workshop topics. Hopefully if something gets canceled, we have some kind of alternates that we can fill in at the last minute. So I just wanted to give you a heads up where we're thinking of going.
Sounds good, thank you, John. Reports of council commissions and committees. Councilmember Cole?
Next E D A meeting will be here Tuesday, March 8th at 3 o'clock.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay.
Short and sweet.
Okay, Councilmember Wong.
Yeah, so the redevelopment master plan group met on Monday and we reviewed chapter four of the, the plan. We've had a lot of discussions about the different districts throughout downtown and how do, are they too patchy or, you know, does it make sense? And, you know, how are we going to use the land? The other discussion we had was about gateway trail access. So we looked at several different options of where that would be on the map. Then there was also a discussion about parks or smaller kind of green space. I think there's a question on what that designation would mean if it was like considered a park or if there's flexibility, if we don't call it a park, but maybe a plaza or some gathering space. As for the Planning Commission, we meet on Thursday at 6:30 here in the chambers. We will be discussing the sign ordinance. And currently we're, we have four applicants for the Planning Commission position. And that will be reviewed here in the next month or so. The Arts and Culture Commission, they've, are still discussing the process of how to accept different projects and how to navigate that for the. Love Ice Cream has also come to our meetings and they're interested in a mural project. So there's been some discussion about that. And we're also just discussing how to finance some of these projects and how that partnership may work with public or private businesses. They've taken on the downtown banners for the 125th anniversary, so they'll be talking about that as well.
135th.
135. I'm sorry, 135.
I keep doing that too.
Thanks. And then we're also having a discussion about snowman statues. I think that is all I have, thanks.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember Thorson.
I have nothing.
Okay, I've got a few things. Business Association luncheon is next week on March 8th, Tuesday at the, at the Legion at noon. Our guest speaker is City Manager John Stark. So I'm sure he'll be very compelling and talk about our great city. The 19th, the student house built, the electricity and the plumbing is in. The windows are coming the first week in March or next week, so that's good. Everything is on track. It's looking very good. I had a League of Minnesota Cities Zoom meeting. We had a short meeting, dues will be going up, but there was a freeze on the dues, so it'll go up next year. And then I had a trust meeting, a League of Minnesota Cities. And of course their insurance rates are going up with the different, just the different claims. Minnesota Women's City Government presents on April 22nd. The topic is family, work, life and balance. So I'll get more information out on that. And that's all I have. General business, Councilmember Cole?
I really only, I have one thing at this point. There was a Casey Lake residents meeting held today at 10:30 via Zoom. Candy, I know you were, you were there as well as there were, I believe, 22 total participants. And I'd kind of like to just turn, turn the mic over to Kerry and let her update a little bit. She was instrumental in setting this whole thing up, working through all the different departments and agencies to get, to get everybody on board, so thank you.
Madam Mayor and Council, yes, we were able to pull it off. Originally, just to kind of bring you up to speed on where we've been with this project, is we've had residents reach out to the city with questions about water quality, water depth, maintenance of the lake. And so we had kind of hosted a resident meeting in early September. It's taken us since then to touch base with all of our agencies. There's multiple agencies that care for that lake. And staff had a meeting with our agency partners in early December. And this was kind of our recap. So what we did, and it was really a good process, I think, for all of the agencies, is we've really kind of outlined who's responsible for what area. Where does your jurisdiction start? Where does your jurisdiction end? What are the goals of your agency for this, you know, much beloved water resource that we have in our city? So today on Zoom, and we will have the recording, will be up on our YouTube channel tomorrow. We've got the meeting available for residents to review so they can see the agencies. I've also created some new content on our website today to kind of help clarify the same thing. You know, questions on this issue is this agency. Questions on this issue is this agency, to just try to clear up the lines of communication and expectations. You know, like I tell our residents, you know, if we could snap our fingers and fix all the problems, we would. But it's not the city's jurisdiction, there's permits, there's a whole lot of other things. And I think that's what we really spent time today in this meeting, was to let all the agencies speak to our residents and let our residents respond back with their questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I learned a lot today about fish and algae. Is that all you have?
That's all I've got.
Yeah, I'll just say that there was a history day at Maplewood Middle School and Candy and I were there as judges. And I would say that there were other representatives from Oakdale and.
Maplewood City Council.
Maplewood too, so it was nice to see other folks representing their cities. And those kids are, they're wicked smart and they were making websites and tribe board exhibits. And you could see that they're very passionate about, about their work, so yeah, it was fun, thanks.
Councilmember Thorson? Okay, I just have a couple. There's going to be a lot of roadwork this spring and summer, so I'm just preparing you. It's not going to be pleasant, but let's be patient. It's got to get done. Cowan School neighbors have contacted me, possibly John, if they could get a resident-only sign across from, Cowan, I have the addresses and I'll get them to you. It's just the staff parks there and they have parking lots. And it's, that would be the east side of Cowan on Margaret. And it misses up if there's any snow plowing or mail delivery. And that's the only place, because the other schools have, you know, resident parking only. And I think, you know, and this has been, I think it's been a sore spot for a while. I mean, but if you could maybe look into it and I'll give you the addresses. There's like just two houses that are affected.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and then I. Has there been a change on the frontage of a yard? Has it gone down, you know, like the frontage or the, what do you call footage of a building, of a house?
Sorry.
Like how many, like how many feet?
Yes, and maybe I understand the question and, and so I'm a newcomer, so bear with me. I might not be 100% accurate, but I do believe that the, the Planning Commission and maybe the city council ultimately approved a sub, a change to the subdivision ordinance that lessened the required area for a buildable lot and the lineal kind of footage. And typically the reason that happens, and I think it's the reason it happened here, is that our comprehensive plan, and I'm kind of making these numbers up, but our comprehensive plan may have said a single-family neighborhood is, you know, X units per acre. But then when we went in and looked at our minimum lot sizes, you couldn't quite make that work. And so we had to adjust the lot sizes a little bit, make them a little smaller to make the density that they met council, that we've told them at council we're going to achieve. So yes, I believe those were changed.
That's all I have tonight. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. The next meeting will be March 15th, 2022. Thank you for your patience.